Okay, we're going to do the Committee of the Whole in council chambers.
Right here, right stand, right where we are. We've got no static.
Yeah, we're not moving, we've got no static. Okay, we can move all the way to Finance and Admin, 6.1, lockup stage issue from the ACO. ACAO.
This is just going back to the last council meeting when Allen and LA and Jacky LaSanne approached council during citizens' period with regards to definition of lockup stage. They had concerns with the definition including siding, and council had said they would bring it back for discussion. They haven't applied for their $1,000 extension, they need to know sooner than later, because it is already the 23rd. So council just needs to decide if they're going to change their definition or include siding, and if not, if they need to pay their $1,000 for the extension. Because this will be one of the properties that I do include in the transfer process, because they don't meet up, meet or lockup stage.
My personal comment and feeling is the siding should be a condition of it. The danger is if it sits for years with just plywood on it, or insulation, or tile.
Oh, strap.
Right, that is a danger. No, I'm not sure if that's what we want. What's council's feelings? Anybody online?
Can you keep the siding in there, but give the extension without the $1,000? Given the, given the, you know, the fact that the guy has done, I mean, he's done a ton of work out there. He's had no intentions of not doing it, I don't think, but, I mean, given the amount of work he's done so far. So can we give the extension, but say yes, we still want to have siding in there?
I think that would open up accounted worms to the other people that have already paid the extension though.
And you've already said no to somebody else that's got a building there?
So what is it, is that the, just then again, I'm asking, just a knowledge question. So is siding actually part of a building considered to be locked up? Like, how did we get to that, just refreshing my memory, how did we get to that spot?
Well, I guess the, there was a few different ways we got here. I'm not sure of them all. I know from other work that I do that the lenders want the siding done to be considered lockup. Because the concern is that the properties sit for years, and nothing else happens to it.
So, and one thing I'm a little confused about, I guess, is that the, like, the lockup stage that the, where the lots are, are on lease land out at the lake, many of those don't have siding on it, and they still don't have siding on it, which I guess is, was what Herb's talking about in terms of, that's the fear. But when, I know of other people who bought it, and there's basically a garage that's just got plywood on it, and the banks have considered that. I'm assuming lockup stage, because they got a loan to do further work on it. So I'm, so I'm kind of, are different banks do different things, or is it, is that just a common practice, has to have siding?
Well, I guess it, a lot of it comes down to what we want in our subdivision. Because once it's at lockup, once we get to the lockup stage, then they've basically met their terms of condition with the town, and that's, that's the end of the road for us. We're, now they're done, right? We have no more, there's nothing else we have left to reinforce. So theoretically, you could put, you know, some chipboard siding, or chipboard on there and never finish it, it's just, it's up there for years. So I guess, is that what we want?
I'm wondering if our terminology in all of this is possibly not correct? In terms of lock, in terms of lockup? In my, in my research that I've been doing now, I don't, I'm on a different side of the stance of what Herb's background is coming from. I've been talking with a few different, I don't know, I guess inspectors and that, for other regions. And possibly our term of the lockup is not, is not, it shouldn't read lockup possibly, maybe it should be reading something else.
Lockup is a definition, or lockup is a term in the agreement, so council needs to have a definition for that term.
Right, but an actual, so if council's term of lockup is having siding, not a building inspector's term of lockup, is that?
Correct.
And from what I understand, lockup means that the building has to be safe from all elements, whether elements, which would mean siding on the building, because the plastic, if it just has the wrap, it's too easy for the wrap to be torn and the elements, water and whatever else to get into the plywood beneath it. So that's why they've deemed it, if you look it up on the internet, which I have a few different places, lockup stage is doors and windows in, roof on, and they consider siding to protect the plywood underneath, not just the plastic wrap.
If that doesn't coincide with the conversations that I've had, but I guess, but yeah.
I guess, for me, I guess the issue is, he's got a, you know, 150, 200,000 dollar building out there right now. So are we willing to work with him or not? Because if we're going to charge him another thousand bucks, and he says he's got a, whatever, and he's gonna, and we're gonna take back the property, I guess, like, I don't think he's going to just let us take back the property, then we're into a legal battle. Or maybe it's simple as saying, "Put your siding on, man," and he comes in the next day and pays us the thousand bucks. So that's what it kind of comes down to, I, if he's either gonna pay it, or we're gonna be into a legal battle, because we're not gonna take back the property. He's not gonna just let us do that and say, "No, no problem, you can take back my 200,000 dollar building."
Yeah, well, I guess the unfortunate thing is that when previous council started this subdivision, that some of these nuances weren't discussed and decided upon prior to. Because here we are, midstream, trying to work on the definition as to what lockup stage is. And the flexibility in the definition that we're experiencing right now is not only a bad thing, but it's a good thing. Because now this is a chance for council to decide what the standard will be for property out at the lake. And as I say, I think our agreement says, once it reaches lockup stage, they've met their commitment.
And the caveat is lifted.
And the caveat is lifted. So after that, as I say, they could sit there, and I'm not saying that these folks will do that, or anybody could do that, but they could sit there for virtually ever with no siding on the property, and there's nothing we could do about it. So this is an opportunity to fix that, if council feels it's a problem, or not.
So how does taxation work in this, if the building has no siding, does the taxation change that they just pay on a non-finished building?
It'll be an unfinished building.
Right. So then it should be at finished stage to have the proper tax authority, right?
Yeah.
Because a person could not do it for six years and be in a non-finished building under a different tax rate.
So the purpose of the lockup definition isn't the legal lockup definition that lawyers would use? It's a lockup definition is what we would expect done by a certain time period?
Right. Yes.
Yeah. So I guess what we're saying now is that we believe that these guys should have had this done by now, and because they haven't, we're going to penalize them for a thousand bucks.
Yes.
And I see, I see all the progress being done out there for his cottage. I would support not having him pay the thousand bucks, but again, it's just, if we are, if we're really trying to keep people tight to timelines, then I guess we would have to support the penalty.
Yeah, well, and again, keeping my precedent, right? So what we decide here will also impact several others.
Future, future developments in the community also.
What happens in town if a person builds a home, and so he says he's gonna build a house in another subdivision, and doesn't put siding on his house?
All depends on what the purchase, it depends what the purchase agreement said?
No, I realize that, I'm just saying, in our community, we own, it's our, it's in, within our rules, or whatever, and we have a guy build a home, whatever, in some other spot, or, or he's doing a new house in his existing property, and he doesn't put siding on it. Do we penalize him?
Nope, no, we don't.
It would depend on, so if it was one of the new lots on the Long Street.
Geimer.
Woodikers too.
Yeah, there's a, there's a purchase agreement that goes along with that, and I would assume in that agreement it says lockup stage.
I'd have to review those agreements, yeah.
Because that's a different agreement.
It's a different agreement.
So.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to be consistent if we, like, I'm, I'm not, I'm just trying to be consistent if we would do the same, if we would have the same sort of agreement elsewhere. Like, I see a lot of progress being done with this fellow's lot, and, you know, when I see the guys that are paying the thousand bucks, where they just cleared a lot, or, or they've got a shed up there, or whatever, I just, you know, I kind of have a bit of a feeling that we should give them a buy on this, because the property, it is in, it is in construction mode. I guess if, I don't know if you can write a separate agreement that says if it's not finished by the time period, you have to pay the extra thousand bucks, but I know that just gets everything messy.
Yeah, it's, like I said, Andre, it's unfortunate this wasn't dealt with previous council, so then we really don't have this discussion now, because if nothing else, we need to be consistent for everybody.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate.
Well, I think he's the only one that's actually in this spot, right? I mean, anybody else would have had to pay the thousand bucks anyway.
There was one other one that was not this far, but actual building.
Yeah, and again.
He was just waiting for windows, I believe.
But the technical definition of lockup is, is it a stage where residential construction, at which point the walls, windows, and doors are in place, so the structure may be secured?
I guess it.
That's all, that's a legal term from the British Columbia Supreme Court decision.
Yeah, it becomes a question of who's, of who's asking the question, Andre? Because it's the old story of those who have the money make the rules, and most of the people that I work for have the money, and they make the rules, and I know what they want.
Yeah, so the thing is, is that what we're talking is what we want, and if, and if, if he has, if he's a builder, and his impression was, he didn't, like, if he didn't realize that his definition of lockup is different than what our definition was, and he only heard that our definition included siding, you know, a month or so ago, right, I think is when we talked about it, then it is a bit, it is a bit of a gray area where it's kind of unfair.
So in, so we're extending 12 people right now, that we extend? So we've extended 12 or 14 people, whatever it is. So the assumption being made that they're going to start construction in a couple of months, if the world holds together. And if they come to us in a year from now, in the same situation as he is, will we waive this fee for all of them?
For another thousand dollars extension?
Yes.
Well, I guess it all depends on where we're at, and where, what point we are. Like, again, it goes back to Mr. LaSanne, the definition of lockup may be the definition, or the legal definition that was there for him, which included, you know, walls, windows, doors, so the structure could be secured, and he has met that. The problem, or the issue is, is that our definition of lockup, which I heard us talk about, was that it had to include siding. And he, when he came and made his presentation, and if I remember correctly, it was really around the confusion on the definition of lockup. And so, you know, do we, you know, if we, were we clear enough in the original definition that said lockup included siding? And I don't believe we were. So if we have, we're sitting here a year from now, and we've got 12 cabins out there that have, they're in the same spot as him, and people are in the process of building, I would, I would probably be okay with it. I mean, it's, you know, it's, we're building, we're doing what we want to do, we're building cottages so that we can collect tax money.
Okay, so, and I'm not saying he's gonna do this. So we waive the thousand dollars, and then he stops, right? He's met his agreement, and he just stops. And then, one year from now, 12 other people do the same thing. Are we okay with that?
I am. I'm not, I don't think it would happen, because it's, it's very unlikely that it's gonna happen, but, again, it goes back to the original, what did we tell, when somebody bought that cottage and they signed that document, they said it's at lockup stage? The definition of lockup stage doesn't, the legal definition that I seen does not include siding. So if he's a builder, he thinks that that's where he's gotta get it to. I don't know if the next part of, I don't know what the agreement says, but if the next part of the agreement say, you pay a thousand dollars, you get another extension, does it get you to another point where you can ask for another extension?
No, it's just.
Hey?
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't.
Well then, I mean, that type of, then that doesn't even make sense, so we don't really care, this is a one-time-only thing.
But, no, no, so, we've extended 12 or 13 people. So.
Right.
One year from now, they have done everything except put siding on their house. So they haven't met the conditions to lockup, in my mind? Are we going to deny the extension, or deny where they're at, and say, "No, no, you didn't meet the agreement, we're taking back your property"?
So we would legally, we would go, because somebody couldn't get a siding finished in the time period for whatever reason, and they have a house sitting there at the end of this time period without siding, we would start legal proceedings to go and try to regain, take the property away? I wouldn't support that.
Okay, so.
That's my opinion.
I get it, Andre.
I wouldn't.
All right, but you guys have to remember, we are a government, right? Either we have rules, or we don't. Either we enforce them, or we don't. Now, if our definition of lockup stage is to the chipboard covering the two-by-six walls, then that's the definition. But it has to be consistent and clear, so that in a year from now, when these other people who weren't able to get it done, and are sitting there with no siding on, know that they're okay. So then, if that's what we want that subdivision to look like, then that's what the resolution should read.
And we'll have to change the previous resolution to remove siding.
Yes.
In council, in the, in the community of the whole, we discussed this before, and we, and we all voted on it to come up with this particular resolution. And so now, having done that, if we go, if we don't stay with this present resolution, then we have to go back and redo the resolution. So I, from my point of view, I think we leave it as it stands, and we work forward from this. And that way, it gives us a baseline to go forward. When it comes, every community has a lockup stage for a building somewhere, unfortunately, maybe we don't, I don't know. But this could be the guidelines for all buildings in our community, let alone the lake lots.
And that's why, that's why I'm trying to state that the wording lockup stage, regardless if it's council version or the legal version, I, my problem is with the terminology lockup stage, because it, to me, it's deceiving.
Well, I think that's, I also, like, you know, and I agree, Bill, the unfortunate part is that, because I'm not an expert on maybe others on our own building, when Mr. LaSanne brought forward his concern, I wasn't aware of how, what the definition of actual lockup was. And until he raised that issue where he, you know, his definition and our definition were different, I wouldn't, I didn't, I didn't know any better, right? So I'm just saying that us as a, as a council, you know, we need to keep in mind what people tell us, and if it's our rules, and that's the way we want it to be, our rules, not a, not a, not his understanding of it, then we'll just make the decision.
That's, that's why we passed a resolution on it before, Andre, and that, and this discussion should have been happening then, not today.
But I didn't know about it, Bill, though, so nobody told me the legal definition for a builder, and our definition was different. What I was, what I think I remember I was talking about is this is the definition, it includes siding. But what we've learned is it doesn't include siding for a builder, unless you guys knew that ahead of time, I didn't know that.
Okay, so at this moment in time, we have a resolution that we passed?
Yep.
Yeah, and the resolution that we passed, what does it say?
Which resolution for the lockup stage?
Yeah.
It was, I believe it was siding, fascia.
At the last council meeting, when Mr. LaSanne was in, I started to ask for clarification of what our definition was, because for whatever reason, I was under the understanding that our definition was single, fascia, stop it, and house wrap.
Therefore, be resolved that council agrees at the lockup stage, the above-mentioned purchase agreements be the exteriors completed, being siding, fascia, windows, doors, and the building must be on the foundation.
So that's the bylaw, or a resolution?
That was the resolution that was passed by this council.
So there's, if there's some councilors that want to change that, or amend that, then we'll need to bring a resolution forward at the next council meeting to change it.
Which will be not, will not be until April 14th, so it'll just have to be, just have to be direction given until then.
But I, can we not just give the extension without paying the, the thousand dollars? Why are we looking to change something that we really want, but we're not giving any, any, you know, any heat to this guy's situation right now, in terms of, he's done so much out there compared to others? Like, what's the, and I'm okay with 12 other people coming to council and explaining their case, is what we're supposed to do anyway, and say, "No, I'm sorry, yours, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense." And we all make decisions all the time, like, just give him his extension that he needs, still say that a lockup stage is with siding, but without paying the thousand dollars.
Well, the issue is that we have a resolution in place that council passed at a council meeting, and if we need to change our mind, then we need to change it by resolution at a council meeting.
And you can do a resolution just for this lot, seeing this lot can be done this way?
Yeah.
Or you don't have to give a siding?
So if, if somebody wants to put forward a resolution for the next meeting, to amend this resolution, to change it, to provide a special one, then you'll need to move it forward. There is a process.
And we can do that and still leave this down for now?
As it stands right now, the resolution that was passed on what day was that?
Oh, I think March 9th?
19.
Last meeting.
As it stands right now, the resolution that was passed, March 9th, is the resolution that council passed at a council meeting.
That's correct.
If council wishes to change their mind, there is a process to changing their mind.
And the resolution can come forward at the next meeting, which is April 14th, and we can just let them know that this is coming forward?
Well, there's a discussion coming forward, whether it passes, we won't know until the council.
Yep. But that doesn't meet my April 1st deadline?
I know.
So we're taking their property back then, as to their previous resolution?
He'll probably pay the extension, would be my guess.
So, but why, and I'm a little bit confused here, this telephone thing is not working out here so well for me, but the, so why can't we just give the extension without the thousand bucks, but still require siding be put on the building? Why can't we do that?
You're gonna put yourself in a place of setting precedent, Trevor? And what will happen is that you will have the, people who have paid will come in and say precedent has been set by not allowing this person to pay? And I would, I don't know if it would happen or not, but I would suspect that they would ask for their money back, I don't know.
But I mean, if 12 people, if 12 people came to the council, had a building, you know, the exterior, and, I mean, I know the inside is not plumped, or like.
No, no, we're just, we're just talking.
It's a lot of work, it's done, that they all had, came in with that situation, wouldn't we all kind of say, "Okay, well, we'll give you an extra extension for waiting for siding, because he had a different definition"? I don't know, I just, anyway, that's just my opinion, I guess.
Okay, so, again, I'm, this is new to me. So as far as I know, if we revert to our bylaws and the procedures, that's, that's your bylaw. So the procedural bylaw talks about changing your mind. And under K for voting, council may not reconsider or reverse a decision with one year after it is made unless, and there's some steps in there. And I encourage you all to read this.
Where is it, Herb?
Check out your procedural bylaw.
Yeah, what area, you said, you said K or something?
K, section K.
Okay.
So I would encourage you guys to read it, there's procedures, and we need to follow the procedures. It's just the way it is. So at this point in time, the existing bylaw stands, I guess the message that we could send to Mr. LaSanne is that council is reviewing it, and that for our next board, our next council meeting, whatever that is, there could very well be a resolution coming forward to change or amend. Yes?
Yep, yep.
Okey-dokey?
Is that Chad?
Okay?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. 6.2, live streaming, issue sheet from the ACAO.
Lewis just came up with this coronavirus and everything, this meeting would have been a lot easier if we could have livestreamed it. Does council want administration to look at getting live, accessing live streaming?
I think we should.
I think we should all.
There's no resolution required, it's just a direction to start looking into it.
Yep.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yeah, I think it should go forward, yeah.
Carrie, you're good with it?
Oh, yes, I responded, sorry, maybe I had my phone too far away.
No problem.
All right, 6.3, direction for council moving forward, issue sheet, ACAO.
I'm just looking for just a little bit of direction, how we're moving forward. You hear from different places, it's regular business, some municipalities or agencies are saying it's not regular business, or business as usual anymore right now. I'm just wanting to know what council's thoughts and opinions are with regards to, like, penalties on property taxes, water bills that are late. Parking tickets, I have actually advised parking ticket, or the employees that do issue parking tickets right now. If it's not a blatant, obvious reason for a ticket, let's just give warnings for right now, a little bit of compassion. Due dates, and how we're gonna move forward with these kind of meetings, if we're gonna continue doing it this way? I'm not sure how fast live streaming will get going. Are we gonna continue moving forward with the tax sale process, water bills? And then Sam and Chris and Public Works are wanting to know about tenders, are we moving forward with the tenders? Mainly the arena flooring, paving? I know it's a lot of questions, but there's just.
I believe we should move forward with that.
My, my feeling is we move forward with everything we're planning, on the tendering processes. If we show a bit of compassion on parking tickets at this time, that's okay. Things like the tax sale dates, tax service handles, all that anyways.
Just keep moving forward.
And at this point in time, my recommendation would be to keep.
I am, um, I do have a question though, oh, no, I guess I, I can't ask it now, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, we heard through the wall?
Yeah.
All right, budget discussion. Graham is here in the meeting, and he's going to talk to us. Graham, I don't know if they're gonna be able to hear you back there. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can talk louder, it's not a big deal.
Cause you can sit by Jen if you can. No, no, that's okay, I can talk.
Can you hear us, guys?
Or am I in the bubble, where you, I can hear me really loud?
No, I can't really hear.
Man, I feel like I'm in the echo chamber here.
You can take chat, sure.
I'll sit next to my Jen, that's fine. We sit next to each other all day, so what about some sick words? Okay, so I sent out a revised budget, uh, middle of last week, uh, contains everything we talked about, and, uh, you're looking at a little bit of an increase in the mill rate that we talked about, uh, last time. Uh, nominal overall, um, and I have a sheet of, uh, some of the items we talked about, the dollar values and potential savings in dollars and mill rates, and at this point, I'm looking for direction from you guys on how to proceed.
Did you make an adjustment for the PST?
For the PST?
Cause it's dropping by one point.
I did not. Um, inflation will go up anyway, um, it's gonna be a long...
Hey Graham, uh, just a curiosity question on page two, uh, airport, we had, uh, like, it's hard because we don't know what actual, last year's, the actuals were, but when you look at airport, and I thought I had heard a few times that our sales were way down this year?
They were, yeah.
But we're budgeting, we're budgeting increased, uh, fuel sales, and then now with the whole, you know, world in a mess, and I know we couldn't predict this, uh, when we put this together, but would that make sense to be a higher amount?
So, overall, the airport revenue is down $2,000. Um, I mean, it should consistently go up, again, inflation isn't going in the other direction yet, maybe it will, um, but it should continue to go up.
No, I just thought that most of the, I thought most of the revenues was because of fuel.
Yeah, well, i- it is, but, I mean, historically, at least as far as I've looked into it, um, the fuel sales have been consistently high, and so we're working on a, a consistency basis. Is last year the, the odd year out, or is that a trend of new things to come? Um, I mean, the alternative here is we budget the fuel sales lower, and we potentially have to tax higher to, to cover them.
Uh huh.
Uh, I would probably rather see a deficit, and try and recover it later, if that's where we're at.
Okay, now listen, and then, I have a question on, so is returns from investment just interest on our, uh, on our, uh, reserves?
Yeah, yeah, on the whole, like, we don't have any money other than what we have in our reserves, so, uh, that money goes in there, and then it ends up getting, uh, pooled out on page five, into the reserves as part of that contributions.
Yeah. And then I have a, I have a couple more questions, just again, there's probably legal, do you think that we have enough money budgeted for legal, like 50,000, is that normal?
Uh, it's much higher than historic, um, usually we only had about 10,000 or 15,000 in there, last year I put about 50, um, this year I'm expecting to see about 50 again. Um, it's tough to gauge, because it's based on kind of what happens and comes out of the door. I, I, do you think we don't want any of these fees, other than land transfers?
Yeah. Yeah, but I was just thinking, when you have, uh, or is that included in the capital, like, when you have to put out big tenders or anything like that?
That would be in the capital, so that's, legal is purely...
Is that included in capital?
Yeah, legal is purely administrative legal, um, so it'd be dealing with workplace issues, dealing with, uh, transfer and all that stuff.
And it's union this year too, it's negotiations this year.
And it's a union negotiation year, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's another thing I was thinking.
I'm hoping we don't get that number, but, I mean, better prepared.
Yeah, and then under protective services, there's a, there's a thing called, uh, there, what is that?
Uh, that one, I'll shut up my notes with me, um...
Other protection?
That's the 911 services, we, uh, we attract those from Brandon.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a nominal value in there for something else, but it's a couple hundred dollars, it's mostly, uh, the 911.
And then, uh, and then, I'm, I'm assuming under, on the next page, on page, uh, four, that landfill closure, that just, that money gets transferred to reserve, right?
Uh, it is, uh, a liability that we have, based on what the engineering company thought our closure would be, yeah, so it, ultimately, we, we expense it every year, it ends up in the reserve.
You have to do it, you have to.
We have to do it, yeah.
It's mandated, you have to set aside money every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're in a good position actually, because our, our reserve has more money than we're obligated for right now.
Okay.
Our assessment may change that, we'll see.
Do we have...
Go ahead, Carrie.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt anyone, it's just tough right now. Do we have, um, county school division's final numbers, or not quite?
I did receive, uh, the letters from both, um, shh, I did talk to, uh, Janette.
Janette.
And, uh, cause I had expected these numbers to be higher, um, despite the cuts that they were told to make, and I'd heard rumblings about a special levy for, uh, deficits, so I know they have until the end of March to make any changes, uh, I think that's the due date for theirs, so I expect once we roll into April, if they haven't given us anything, we should be able to move forward.
Okay.
But I did get the letters from both, uh, the KSD one was in Boston, so I'm assuming that's, it is what it is.
Graham, I got a couple other things too, that Carrie's done there.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have, do we have enough money, the guys, well, I don't know if they probably do, but I'll ask anyway, enough money to maintain our parks and playgrounds?
Uh...
I know that, uh, I know that when we talked at our last meeting, there was some discussion around that.
Well, I mean, that's a pretty broad definition, uh, like, what, what exactly do you see? We do budget money for maintenance of the parks, the arena workers typically, uh, spend their summers cutting grass, pulling weeds, and doing whatever else they do.
But it's not to replace structures?
But it's not replacing structures. Now, we do have...
No.
I was gonna say, we do have some money in a parks reserve, I have no idea where it came from, it's been there since I started, uh, it's about 40, 50,000 dollars.
Yeah, just when I look at this page five, and I see 205,000 dollars budgeted this year, 207,000 next year, um, I heard us talking about, you know, we have some, some, uh, parks that need more fill, and there's some, you know, just some tender loving care required on some of the things, but I was just wondering if we had enough, enough, uh, money put away for that?
I mean, this is just business as usual, uh, funds put away right now, so I don't, I don't think it would really scope in a lot of really big, heavy-duty work, uh, other than what we just do to maintain it. Um, some of that stuff isn't all that expensive, uh, fill stuff, not expensive, seed isn't necessarily all that expensive, um, I mean, I didn't do these budgets for them, this is, uh, probably Chris and Sam.
Yeah.
I have her to some degree, when she was here, um, but I, my impression is business as usual, um, they're not looking at very major changes with that.
And then under the transfers there, uh, there was two things that I, I was wondering about, on infrastructure, we go up by a hundred thousand dollars from previous years, and also in fire, I'm assuming the fire one is for the fire hall expansion?
Yeah, so, um, Mr. Manage had, uh, provided a couple long-term plans, 10-year plans, with, uh, increased allocations for the fire reserve to meet, uh, not only his trucks, but also either his fire truck, or, sorry, his fire extension, uh, to the, the building, or, uh, sub-building, and so that, that's something, again, on that very last page, where we talk about, uh...
Yeah.
Dollars that can be saved, this is potentially one of those things, and again, this could be looked at every year, um, we can talk about it this year, we can talk about it next year, we probably will, um, we aren't putting enough money into that fire reserve to maintain the equipment we have, so there probably should be a little more in there.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's good, I, that's kind of what I, I thought, and then under the graphs there, I think Chad brought up, uh, uh, I don't know what page that is, page 14 or something, or 15, um, that skate park?
Yeah, we, we talked a little bit about the skate park at the last meeting, and it was decided that if it was gonna come out of that, uh, hydro funding, that decision could be made later with, uh, like, it's, it's not taxed dollar money, so we don't need to budget it in, um, we just have to make sure that those funds are available when you make that decision.
Okay.
That's a good place to be anyway.
Yeah. Um, I think that's, uh, that's the only questions, looking through my page here, yeah, I think that's all the questions that I have, more, more for knowledge, not, not really, uh, anything else.
I know this is a hard document to read, it's long, it's got a lot of detail, and I incrementally change it every year to try and make it a little bit more legible.
It would be a lot more helpful if we had, like, our actual spend year, I know it's not that easy, but we had our actual spend year to date, so we can compare it.
Yeah, it, it's complicated, uh...
Yeah.
We'll have it, and you'll have a chance to see it before we take it to public hearing, for sure, so.
Uh huh.
It may not be a hundred percent, but it'll be pretty close. The other councilors on the line, do you have any questions? Trevor?
Uh, I, I, I called Graham earlier today, just, just to make sure I was on the understanding here, that there'd be a slight increase then in taxes, not much with this current budget, unless things change when we get the school division's file numbers, right? So that was the only question I had, he said it was like a point four or something, or point five?
Residential increases point four three, and, uh, commercial decreases by point five one.
Okay.
Yeah, I looked at, I did, uh, I mean, I created that chart last year, and if, uh, you use that 212,000 dollar value, or home value, your taxes would increase 38 bucks.
Yeah.
And then, and then commercial taxes drop by, uh, uh, 500,000 dollar commercial value, would drop 165 bucks.
Chad, do you have any questions?
It looks like one mill rate is worth 90 bucks or something, Graham, and for residential, and commercial, 325 bucks.
Uh, one mill's worth 207,000, and then residential's point four five, so it's about 90, and, uh, commercial's point six five, so it's about 130. Chad, did you have any questions?
Uh, no, not really, um, I'm trying to, I'd like to see the previous year numbers, but I know we can't do that, like, before the public hearing, it'd be good, and if we need to make any changes, we'll have one more meeting, I would assume, but, yeah.
Carrie?
We need a...
Carrie, did you need, do you have any questions?
No, I, I was just curious to know if we had gotten final numbers from county school divisions, that was my only question.
Okay, that's the other thing to be, and I did, I mentioned this to Trevor, um, you may have questions, because with the, the decrease in the school taxes and, uh, an almost static overall tax rate, you may get questions from taxpayers asking why our revenue is potentially going up, right? So, um, and again, there is, there is possibility to, to bring it down, to achieve that savings still, is it worth it? I don't know, we do need the money, it is what it is, it's up to council to decide. Okay, so, um, the process is, we're, public hearing right now is tentatively scheduled for?
April 27th.
April 27th, and that really is up in the air, depending on the overall situation with the virus, and in the event that we can't meet that date, the government has given us till June 15th?
June 15th, instead of May 15th.
Instead of May 15th, so we do have an extra month if, if, if we need it, if, if we, if we need it.
Is there a way that we can move forward on some of the other things, though, in order to get tenders out and things like that?
We've, we've pre-approved most of those tenders already, so they're gonna, the direction we've given staff is to keep moving forward with the tenders, right? So we can get some of that stuff done.
Probably seven or eight, I don't know.
Yep, quite a bit, so we can get moving on that.
You know what, I do have one question, sorry, guys, um, is there, Graham, do you have a recommendation for a certain area that if we, should I, I guess, pull, pull something from or cut out in order to not necessarily raise taxes?
Yeah, it's on that last page, um, those are the most fluid areas that we've added to, I mean, a lot of it's just staffing, I mean, our staff is our biggest expense, um, doesn't provide us with a lot of flexibility unless we change the way we do business, so these are the kind of the items we've been goofing around with a little bit this year, and making changes to. Um, usually, the reserves are the first place to pull money from, because you can pull big dollars, nothing immediate change to, but that may be just kicking yourself in the foot for the future.
What would it take, instead of going, this point four percent on residential, and whatever it was on business, what would it take in order to drop it one?
To one point? Make that cut 206,000 dollars into the budget, so?
206,000.
Sorry. The, uh, the province, and now's not the time, but the province had said something about in the budget, or something, that they would come in and review for excess spending if we wanted them to, is that something we should be looking into?
Do you guys?
You guys interested in having them do that? I don't think it would impact this year's budget cycle, but if they would come in and have a look at where we spend our money?
I think it's only a matter of time, they're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah. Is, is anybody interested on the other end there?
I can, I can too.
Can you check it out, Chad? It, it's not a priority, it's not a priority, it's just one of those things. I think there's probably some discussions we could have regardless of this, about how we just do our business in general, um, but those would never be closed to recessions where... Yep. Okay, any other discussion on the budget? You guys on the phone, anybody on, more on the budget?
No, it's good for me.
So we're gonna move forward with it, or? Yeah, so I'll, again, I'll, I'll keep working on this year's numbers, I'll release something a little closer down, I have something a little better for you, and then if nothing changes...
You need anything else from us, Graham?
Well, yeah, like I said, I'll, I'll release kind of one last, uh, completed version that's gonna go to the public hearing with current year numbers, for you guys to take a look at, if that changes anybody's minds about something, or at that point, we can make a change, otherwise, yeah, I'll forward. Okay. Um, new business, and new business next meeting, does anyone have anything for next meeting, whenever it might be?
Tentatively scheduled for April 14th.
Tentatively scheduled for April 14th.
As long as, there was a resolution at the last meeting that was supposed to come forward from April 6th because of AMM, but AMM is now canceled, so there's no point.
Yeah. I know it's in our bylaws, I just asked Chad about it, or whatever, but look, people being home for the three-week or four-week period here, I know there's gonna be lots of cleaning up in the, in their homes and everything else, and, but it's in our bylaws, and it has to go through three readings to, uh, give people a little slack on garbage going from two bags to four bags, but, uh, it's a, gonna be a lengthy process to get it through, so.
It may not, let me check into it, because it's not gonna be an always and forever thing, we may be able to just do a resolution for a one-time, for a time period.
We usually do a town cleanup or something, don't we?
Yeah, we do this.
Yeah, good idea.
So what, can we do that now? Can we push it ahead?
Can we push it ahead?
I could check with Sam and Chris, see what their employees are up to.
Just people are home and they have time to clean.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I didn't hear what Bill said.
Uh, it was just had to do in regards to the two bag limit, Carrie. So we're gonna put it on the next agenda to see if there's anything we can do to be a little more flexible with it right now.
Yeah, I can talk to Sam and Chris and I can do a petition sheet for that. And I will catch the bylaw. And I will look into it, I'm, I'm pretty sure we can just do a resolution for a timeframe.
Sorry, so at this point, there, there isn't anywhere where people can buy additional K? So that, is that why we're heading in this direction or just trying to be helpful?
Just to be helpful, Carrie, cause, uh, everybody's at home and everybody's gonna be spring cleaning and doing and, uh, yeah, just to cut a little slack to the community right now, that's all.
Thank you for clarifying, I, it's just, I, I had a first time hearing you.
Okay, no problem.
But she does have a good point, you can't come and get it.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, you can't come in and get there.
You can't come in and get it.
Tickets for the two bags, or for more bags, cause the offices are closed.
Yeah. Because it used to be here in the wellness center in the museum. Pardon me? The landfill's open? Yeah, it's pop, yeah, we could do that.
Can you check on it?
Yep.
So can a, sorry, so can a bag tag be purchased at, am I loud?
Nope.
No, you're good.
Yeah, okay, sorry guys. So, I was, I've never been to the landfill, sorry. I'm probably missing out, but I'm, I'm under the understanding that when you go to the landfill, you need to have your tickets or prepaid pass prior?
That's correct.
Can a single bag tag be purchased at the landfill?
No, you can't purchase a single bag tag. You can go to the landfill with your garbage and pay and take your garbage bag in, but. They do have a debit machine there. I'm gonna look into having tags put there and if, if they don't have an issue with that, I'll just get something put on our website and Facebook saying that they can be purchased there.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I do have one in camera item. It's a staffing issue, so, uh, we're gonna just take, we're gonna take a moment here while Brian does his thing, but I guess Bill, if you would, do the honors.
Resolve that, uh, we do now move, move ourselves into the in-camera portion of the committee as a whole, but the mayor takes in the chair to discuss matters required on our attention.